Good morning, everybody. Alright, we're really excited to get started here and see what the students have come up with this year. Last year, we had some great presentations, so I know that my colleagues and I are really excited about that. Again, I want to thank Craig Gast and the school board and the principal and everyone that's here, the superintendent. Thank you for being here. This is a great opportunity for us to get to work with you all and show you a little bit about what council does. And then, we have two pros sitting here with ASB president, so we know this order is going to be very ruly, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so we look forward to that. And Gerald, do you want to say a few words about the process or anything?
No, just that, um...
The city manager, Mr. George.
Alright, thank you. I sit on the board of USC Graduate School of Public Policy, and we did something like, just last week, we did a case challenge where the graduate students teamed up together to present different projects. So I'm looking forward to seeing what the students came up with in relationship to... You often meet the future Trojans for all that, but maybe bro...
Yes, future Trojans!
Congratulations, you're important here when you have to say today.
Alright, thank you, Mr. George. Without further ado, I'll turn it over to Mr. Gast. Greg, would you like to say a few words about the process today?
Yeah, which way should I face here? Yeah, I just want to explain kind of what we did for all the city officials sitting here. Since we last saw each other, our classes have spent nine weeks in the classroom, taking the three challenges that the city has given us. And we've developed four class plans for what you guys wanted us to do with the downtown area, the local travel network, and for the Olympics and the World Cup and Super Bowl. So you have four different competitions. Each class is competing against the other class. So these are the voting members who are going to decide, and these are the committee chairs that are going to defend each of the class's project after each video shown. So it's kind of the process today. If there is a tie like there was last year, the city council is going to break that tie, just like they did last year. So, I did see all the videos. There are a lot of similarities, so you're going to need to look for some details to make the difference between the videos. So, on that note, I am really happy to show you four classes, nine-week senior project. Are you ready to play the first one? After each video, there'd be about a five-to-seven-minute Q and A, so all of you can take notes and ask questions. Trying to figure out the computer. Alright, I'm having issues already. There we go.
This is period one of Mr. Gast's political behavior, and we would like to present to you our project.
From a variety of bars to restaurants to gyms, a hotspot of successful employers and businesses, a high-quality district and education system, El Segundo is a perfect small-town city. El Segundo's extensive resources and commitment to growth provide citizens with an ever-changing, safe, clean, and comfortable environment that fosters residential and economic expansion. Here, we will discuss our vision to incorporate work, live, play, mixed-use development in El Segundo. We plan to add more amenities to our parks, to add rooftop gardens, and more communal spaces throughout the city. We want to ensure that we're utilizing all of El Segundo's beautiful spaces and putting these recreational offerings to good use.
The Civic Center in El Segundo has the potential to become a thriving hub for community engagement, recreation, and relaxation. This outlines a plan to transform the Civic Center into a lively public space by incorporating fire pits, a play area, a fountain, and citrus trees. These additions aim to create a welcoming environment for residents and visitors of all ages, fostering a sense of community and enhancing the overall quality of life in El Segundo. By implementing these changes, it would increase community engagement, enhance the aesthetic appeal of town, promote family activities, and support local ecology. The two fire pits that we would like to put in the center of the Civic Center with seating around them would encourage social gatherings and evening use. It provides a cozy atmosphere during cooler months, and it's suitable for small community events and family outings. Little play area include would include wet-poor rubber flooring to give a cushion if a child falls, also incorporating the wet-poor rubber hills. This offers children a dedicated space for physical activity and socialization. It attracts families to the Civic Center, increasing overall foot traffic, and includes inclusive equipment to cater to children of all abilities.
For the fountain, it would give an aesthetically pleasing central focus point to the Civic Center. A fountain enhances the visual appeal and creates a serene environment. It acts as a natural gathering spot for visitors, and it can be designed to include interactive water features for children during warmer months. We would also like to propose an addition of citrus trees in this area for the community. It adds greenery and shade, improving the microclimate. It provides a source of fresh, locally-grown fruit, and enhances the sensory experience with the fragrant blossoms and vibrant fruit. There would also need to be a maintenance plan for this area. This would include a schedule for the fire pits, play area, fountain, and citrus trees, assigning responsibility to appropriate municipal departments or higher-dedicated staff. Transforming El Segundo Civic Center into a vibrant public space with fire pits, a play area, a fountain, and citrus trees will significantly enhance the community's quality of life. We aim to create a multifunctional space that caters to the diverse needs of El Segundo's residents and visitors. By fostering a sense of community, improving aesthetics, and promoting family-friendly activities, the revamped Civic Center will become a cherished destination for all.
Parking is a big issue for the downtown residents and visitors, as there is no parking structure for people to put their cars and explore El Segundo. They are subjected to parking along the streets, which at most points are taken up by making it difficult to find any space to park their cars. This can turn people away, as without parking, they cannot explore the different aspects of downtown, such as the dining or the farmer's market. The solution to this is creating a parking structure on Main Street and Grand Avenue. The parking structure will be located next to the fire station and police department. At first glance, this may seem like a problem, as there's no parking for the first responders, but we admitted so that the first floor of the parking structure will consist of parking spots limited only to them. The parking structure will consist of three floors each, with about eighty parking spaces on each floor. On the third floor of the parking structure, there will be trees at each of the corners, so that there is a bit of greenery to have an aesthetic look while also contributing to the environment. To add on to the aesthetic look of the lot, there will be a mural on one of the walls to represent the community, El Segundo community, and the history behind it. The picture on the mural would be the El Segundo Chevron Refinery, as it holds a lot of significance to the town. It was the second standard oil refinery in the West Coast and supplies twenty percent of all motor vehicle fuels, as well as forty percent of the jet fuel consumed in Southern California. Transforming the little parking space next to the fire and police department into an actual parking lot will help upgrade the overall experience for the downtown area, as it will attract more people to explore the area without the worry of not finding any space to park.
One of the main goals of our project is to find a way to bring more money and revenue into El Segundo via entertainment during big sporting events like the Olympics or World Cup. In order to be able to achieve this, we've came up with a few ideas to bring in more people. Our first ideas were to create watch parties and tailgate events where local businesses can get a chance to advertise themselves and make money from the sense they set up. Another idea we had was to host El Segundo Olympics, a mini version of the Olympics during or right before the Olympics.
As mentioned before, the El Segundo Olympics would be a mini version of the Olympics held right here in El Segundo. It would be held at the high school because of the track, big fields, and plethora of equipment. It would be open for all people to join and play as long as they pay. Obviously, it would not be a one-to-one replica of the Olympics, as some sports like swimming aren't feasible to host at the high school. But there would be track and field events, relay races, obstacle courses, tug-of-war, volleyball, baseball, basketball, and any other sport that could be held at the high school. This would be an open event, letting, as I said earlier, anyone play any sport at any time, as long as enough space or enough people to play the team sports. It would cost around fifteen dollars to participate and five dollars to watch. As you can see in this image, we sectioned off different areas to show what sports would go where. We plan to have the green, which is the north and south gym of the high school, be the basketball and volleyball, the red as the baseball, obviously, the yellow as the track and field, along with any special relay events like a torch relay, the black as a soccer or flag football area, and the blue as any other miscellaneous sports that we could fit in. And, while this event is mainly for the Olympics, it can be transferred into other sports for the World Cup and Super Bowl, using the two big fields for soccer and flag football.
Our main idea is to host a World Cup, Super Bowl, and Olympics watch party. This would look similar to the watch party for the Little League World Series. There would be a large blow-up projector screen and George Brett Field to project one of the big games. This allows for patrons to sit in the grass or chairs and enjoy the game. Patrons will be able to enjoy activities such as a bounty house, Giant Jenga and Connect Four, cornhole, and blow-up soccer. They will enjoy food and drinks being sold from local food trucks and vendor stands. We'll also provide a food delivery service to bring food from businesses in El Segundo that don't have food trucks or aren't able to bring their cooking setup to the park. We plan to designate the roller rink for people twenty-one and over, where a local bar will come out and have a stand to serve alcoholic beverages.
One of the concepts we're considering involves organizing a tailgating and pre-gaming festivities that El Segundo will be hosting for the upcoming World Cup, Olympics, and Super Bowl. These events promise to be great gatherings where people from all over can come together to celebrate their favorite teams in the communal atmosphere. For the tailgating event, our plan is to provide transportation to and from games, ensuring that people don't have to worry about the hassle of parking and/or navigating through traffic. By offering this convenience, we aim to improve the overall experience and make it as enjoyable as possible for our attendees.
We created a poll to find out the public opinion on our ideas. From the polls, we found that around eighty-five percent of the public are in support or neutral towards the idea of hosting these pre-post-game events. Additionally, we found that most people would prefer to attend a watch party or going to a tailgate, but the tailgate still did get considerable support. As for where to host these events, the top three locations people voted for were Rec Park, Library Park, and the beach respectively.
When discussing advertising and transportation within El Segundo, we have multiple ideas to help bring people to El Segundo through hotel advertising and hotel transportation. Going into some ideas, we will have pamphlets including the watch party time and all events that will take place during that time as well, specifically at Recreation Park. These pamphlets will be given out by the concierge, and they will also inform everyone coming into the hotels of all the events whenever people ask about events nearby.
Additionally, these pamphlets will also be in hotel rooms to allow for easy access. Hotels that may include this will be Hilton Garden Inn, DoubleTree Hilton Hotel, and the Hyatt Regency Los Angeles. We would be able to put these pamphlets in the hotels by speaking to the relevant manager to find out what opportunities there are. We also have advertising of the watch party playing on hotel room televisions. Whenever people turn the TV on, thus informing them on events and also showing them pictures.
For transportation, we are thinking of using public transportation and also looking into hiring a private company for transportation. The cost of advertising within LAX will cost anywhere from nine thousand five hundred to thirty-four thousand five hundred per display for a four-week period. We can potentially advertise on some transportation buses. This can be an advertising flyer on the door of the bus or at the bus stop. These buses will transport visitors from LAX to local hotels as a part of their hotel fee. We will also have these buses take the visitors to our events, however, this will be free to them.
On the bus, we can also set up a stable stand near the bus driver. Another form of advertising we will have is putting pamphlets in hotels and around SoFi. These will make guests aware of events going on in and around El Segundo to draw them in. We can make sure hotel staff know about restaurants, events, and things to do around El Segundo, so they can give good recommendations and information to guests when they enter or when they ask what they can do.
Our group was in charge of creating a way to popularize and promote the El Segundo local travel network that is used by micro-mobility vehicles, but specifically our e-bikes. Micro-mobility vehicles are low-speed vehicles that are small and lightweight and mostly used for short trips. Most are human-powered, which means zero emission. Some examples of micro-mobility are neighborhood electric vehicles like golf carts, e-scooters, and e-bikes.
What qualifies e-bike? E-bikes have less than seven hundred and fifty watts of power. The same rules for bicycles apply to e-bikes. There are three different types of e-bikes and different rules to go with them. First type has a pedal assist and max out at twenty miles per hour. Second type has pedal assist and throttle assist, but also max out at twenty miles per hour. Third type has pedal or throttle assist and max out at twenty-eight miles per hour. This classification does have a minimum age requirement of sixteen and is required to wear helmet for all ages. All types of e-bikes have restrictions about where they can ride. For example, type three is not allowed on bike paths.
E-bikes and other micro-mobility vehicles such as e-scooters and electric golf carts offer a sustainable and efficient way to travel, but they also present unique challenges in mixed-traffic environments. So how can we make streets safer for all micro-mobility riders? First, let's talk about infrastructure. Dedicated bike lanes, especially those separated from car traffic, are crucial. Protected bike lanes using physical barriers like bollards or curbs can significantly reduce accidents. These lanes provide a clear, safe path for e-bikes away from the dangers of car traffic. Cities like Amsterdam and Copenhagen are great examples of how effective this can be, with more than three-quarters of the users stating that they feel safe. Implementing protected bike lanes not only improves safety for e-bike riders, but also encourages more people to choose biking over driving. This way, we can get more of our residents and even tourists during the Olympics and World Cup to begin utilizing these lanes, which benefits the environment and will reduce traffic congestion, which will be a serious problem with the influx of these visitors.
Next, let's consider intersections. Intersections are high-risk areas for e-bike accidents. Installing bike-specific traffic lights and advanced stop lines can help manage the flow of bikes and cars, reducing the risk of collisions. These measures give e-bike riders a head start and greater visibility, making intersections safer for everyone. Safety is also essential. While infrastructure improvements are critical, encouraging riders to wear helmets and with flexible clothing can make a big difference in reducing injuries and fatalities. In a study conducted by Cleveland Clinic, it was found that serious head injuries are reduced by sixty percent and traumatic brain injuries by fifty-three percent.
Education and awareness campaigns are vital. Workshops and training sessions can teach both e-bike riders and drivers about road sharing and safety practices. These workshops can be held during the weekends and during the ride-out by volunteer expert riders, or we can even partner with local bike shops, which will provide them with publicity or the ESPD. It's important for riders to understand the rules of the road and for drivers to be aware of e-bikes and all other forms of micro-mobility. Maintaining infrastructure is just as important as building it. Regular maintenance of bike lanes and paths ensures they're free of hazards like portholes and debris, which can be especially dangerous for e-bike riders.
By improving infrastructure, promoting safety gear, educating the public, and maintaining our bike paths, we can create safer streets for e-bike riders and everyone who shares the road.
To get people to use micro-mobility, the city can partner with businesses and municipalities to implement reward programs and incentivize people to choose micro-mobility options. For example, individuals can earn points or discounts for every trip they take using a bike-sharing or scooter-sharing service. They can then be redeemed for rewards such as free rides or discounts on other goods and services. To further incentivize the public, we can offer discounts on public transportation and offer subsidies to the residents from the government for the purchase of or rental of micro-mobility vehicles, such as electric scooters or bicycles. These subsidies can help offset the initial costs of acquiring these vehicles, making them more accessible to a wider range of people.
How can we ensure that we get terrorists to also use this amazing system? For this bigger question at hand, we believe that the first step is to make them feel comfortable and familiar with the surrounding areas. To do this, we need to make it a priority to have maps of the city and the bike paths that will be available at each micro-mobility vehicle post. It would also be extremely helpful for the city of El Segundo to plan and host various events, especially during the summertime. Such events could be community rides in which all are welcome to use their micro-mobility vehicles and have dedicated car-free days, which will be planned accordingly, so not to interfere with work, school, or lives of others. Which will be planned accordingly so not to interfere with work, school or lives of others.
But first, in order to get the attention of our citizens and get them on board with these ideas. Our plan is to make an e-bike ride out event, which we will close down all the streets that El Segundo local travel network runs through. And have full a full day event based around e-bike safety and popularizing our city's local travel network. And we will also have food trucks provided as well.
The purpose of the e-bike ride out safety event is to educate people on e-bike safety. While providing a safe environment for e-bike riders. We also want to provide a sense of community for the e-bike riders in El Segundo. Our plan for the ride out is that it will take a it will take place on Main Street, Mariposa, Grand. Maple Avenue and PCH. The e-bike the e-bikers will be able to free roam through the streets. And all of the downtown districts will also be accessible. The ride out will take place from twelve PM to four PM. And there will be an e-bike safety class that e-bikers can drop in on. There will also be cops outside the police station explaining the laws of e-bikes and precautions people should take when they are riding e-bikes.
In this land, hopes and dreams are all that matter.
As a kid, I wanted to be an artist.
I was obsessed with Star Wars.
Alright, can the committee chairs from first period please come up to the podium? And city council, if you wanna guide any questions or let the kids know any questions you'd like to ask, they can ask them. Thirty seconds. Daryl, if you have any questions, you can if you have any issues, you can tell them to ask. Ready Haley? Alright, let's go around and each of the leaders can ask a question. Carter, your start. Anybody? Somebody's gotta step up.
Uh, what was the question again?
Uh, so how would El Segundo ensure the safety and accessibility of the mini electors?
Uh, yeah, so you know, safety is definitely important, uh, part of this. Uh, we'd like to have, you know, security there to make sure everything's running smoothly. Uh, having the police come out and help out is make everything make sure everything goes smoothly, for sure.
James?
Uh, here's Doug, uh, one question together about the the parking lot first responders. Um, like first of all, if you already have kind of a limited budget, uh, as far as things down the city. So, uh, like first I want to know why you would, uh, prioritize parking or renovate something like rent parks especially when. Parking doesn't guarantee visitors, uh, from other cities coming in, right? If you look at Manhattan Beach, they have a lot of visitors from other cities and there's not a lot of parking there. So I don't think that that necessarily guarantees that it'll bring people in. And then, um, also, how do you plan on solving the issue of, uh, having first responders in a civilian parking lot? We have a lot of pedestrian foot traffic and, uh, cars driving in and out all the time.
Uh, yeah, so we did a a survey, uh, sent out to the city and a bunch of the, uh, students at El Segundo. And one of the main topics was, uh, our main focuses was that people wanted more parking. So we wanted to attack that. It was one of the first three, the three was like, uh, making it more green, parking and then, uh, adding more activities. So we definitely wanted to focus on the parking aspect for sure. Um, we do also have plans to, you know, make it, uh, beautify El Segundo. With adding, uh, vertical gardens, we wanted to add more greenery. So we we wanna attack what the the city and what the students wanted first and then focus on the rest.
Um, yeah, I was just curious about, um, I I you you mentioned, uh, uh, more greenery and stuff like that. Did you spend on that?
Yeah, so we, one of our plans is to add citrus trees as well to the civic center. Uh, we have citrus trees, wanted to add vertical gardens to, you know, one of the big things is pollution here, so we wanted to. You know, help out with that as well as just making it more beautiful for the people that are coming down to the to the downtown area. Yeah, thank you.
Oh, I have a question. So I really like your ideas about the civic center. So I just have a couple of questions about it. So the first thing is, what is the visibility of actually fitting? A fountain and a park in this property being that it also has to be used for its intended purpose, which are civic services? Like, how how feasible is it actually to fit all of that here?
Uh, yeah, so we wanted to, so our plan is to remodel some of the area here. Um, it's not gonna be like a major fountain. We just wanted somewhere to so that the families can go come down. Have more activity to do here while also, you know, maintaining the civic aspect of it. So it's not gonna take up too much space, but we do wanna remodel it, just beautify a little bit more.
And then also, um, about your poll, did you guys base your responses on age? So did you separate?
Yeah, we had separate on age.
And, um, were your results ranked for the ideas in the civic center? Like the faun- how did the fountain compare to having just a red, like a gathering space or a park?
So yeah, one of the things was people wanted more activities, uh, to do in the downtown area, so we had to incorporate that. That's kind of where the fountain, uh, aspect came from for for that, yeah.
I'll go. Adding off of that, how can we ensure like the children's safety with the water fountain and the fire pits right next to it?
Uh, yeah, so we said we have a a maintenance schedule for it, uh, so we're gonna have people there to make sure everything's. You know, safely done, all these activities are safe and and secure for the for the for the children and for the adults there as well.
Um, I mean, kind of also going off of that. You have a lot of events that are kind of like tailgating and I guess you guys said also pre-gaming, that people are gonna be consuming alcohol. How are you gonna ensure the children's safety if there's like having to transport yourself to those events and then also consuming alcohol?
Um, we're gonna have like separate areas for like kids and adults, so I think just having an adult only area where there'll be like checking IDs and things like that. So children won't be a part of that, so, yeah.
Uh, if I could ask now your transportation group, how would you plan to, actually, could you just expand on the idea for car free days?
Uh, yeah, so when you pay for like the hotel, let's say if it's close to LAX, it might include like the transportation fee. So like picking you up from the airport and taking you to El Segundo to these events, um, would be included in the hotel fee. Um, so.
Uh, I thought I thought car free days would constitute more encouraging people to encouraging or mandating that people, uh, ride bikes. Or use alternate transportation instead of driving cars.
Uh, yeah, we mainly focused on like buses and taking people there, so we didn't really focus on like bikes and things like that. But that's definitely still an option that hotels will provide that they'll provide like bikes and things, so if they didn't wanna take a car, then that would be another option.
Okay.
Um, my question, I, cause you guys mentioned rooftop gardens in your video. Um, I was wondering where those, where you guys would plan on putting those specifically and also how you would incentivize to pay for something like that.
Yeah, so we kinda ended up going away from that idea. Uh, it would be pretty difficult to encourage, um, some of the residents in the area to incorporate these items. So we wanted to focus more on the, like the citrus trees were incorporated in the civic center, as well as the vertical gardens, which we didn't really mention that much in the video. We did do a lot of research on which would create more of a a beautification process in in the city itself.
Alright, thank you.
Tim, do you have a question?
Um, I saw I saw a connection, uh, to local businesses, especially with, uh, slow moving vehicles. Did you guys have any plans to connect with restaurants to bring in both outside and local visitors?
I don't think that was like, we were just talking about like promoting e-bikes and like the safety with, um, like the different like e-bike shops that are here in El Segundo. Um, but I guess it would bring more like foot traffic to restaurants because of the bike lanes right next to like all these major streets.
Um, and then, did you have any specific like outreach topics for restaurants to kind of bring business in for them? Unrelated to travel network?
Uh, no.
Alright, well, I did wanna say I really enjoyed, um, your plan for parking. I think that it's a really big issue that we have. And that the three stories with eighty different parking spots would be really good. And then also your greenery plan was really amazing.
Yeah, we just wanted to say thank you for all your hard work put into this and great job, period one.
This thing works, oh.
Super Bowl and Olympics on the horizon, we have a fantastic opportunity to attract sports fans to El Segundo. Let's discuss our strategy to make this happen.
Our first idea is to. Create sports fan packages. These packages would include tickets to games, local maps and a booklet of coupons for our top restaurants and attractions. This way, fans can enjoy the games and discover the best of what El Segundo has to offer.
We should also emphasize how close we are to the major sports venues. Fans can easily commute back and forth, making El Segundo the perfect base for their stay. And the coupons will definitely encourage them to explore our town.
We also need to focus on our dining scene. El Segundo has a variety of restaurants like Sausal, Deponica and Slice and Pike. By including the dining coupons, we are promoting local businesses and giving visitors a taste of our culinary diversity.
One main thing that we need to highlight in El Segundo is how close we are to LAX and the amount of hotels we have to offer.
We should place brochures all over the local hotels. These brochures can list local events, hidden gems and the best places to eat. Tourists can grab one as soon as they check in and have all the information they need right at their fingertips.
Their brochures should be visually appealing and packed with useful information. We could also include maps and event schedules so tourists can plan their days easily. We should also highlight our local events. El Segundo hosts so many exciting activities throughout the year. By showcasing street fairs, live music and family friendly activities, we can offer tourists a full experience beyond just the sports events.
And what about merchandise? We could create stylish El Segundo t-shirts. Tourists love souvenirs and these t-shirts will act as walking advertisements for our town. We can sell them in local shops and include them in our fan packages.
And let's not forget about social media. We can encourage tourists to share their experiences in El Segundo using a special hashtag like hashtag El Segundo Sports. We could even run a photo contest to boost engagement and showcase the fun people are having here. So to give a whole brief conclusion of our plan, we will have sports fans packages, informative brochures in hotels, promote local events, stylish t-shirts. And a strong social media campaign. Let's make El Segundo the go-to destinations for sports fans.
Super Bowl has extreme significance to America. We found that most people attending came from the most populous states in America, such as Texas or Pennsylvania. Of these people, one third attending had an income of over a hundred thousand and a college degree. Due to this, most attendees were more likely to shop at expensive brand stores like Dick's Sporting Goods and Lululemon. And more likely to spend money at local restaurants and stores. These attendees sitting close to the stadium at popular hotels, with this information in mind, we should cater to what those states do not have, such as accessible beaches. Thus, a transportation system should be established to provide a route to the El Segundo beach. This route should stop at downtown, the Hilton and LAX for optimized tourist travels. Transportation should also be provided to and from Inglwood for the game. One way El Segundo can implement more tourism is by creating a vibrant pedestrian friendly environment. Attracting both local and visitors to explore the city's shops, restaurants and attractions. For example, in nearby Santa Monica, the city's third street promenade regularly shuts down traffic. To allow for outdoor dining, shopping and entertainment. Closing down Richmond Street and implementing a golf cart system could significantly enhance mobility and convenience for both pedestrians and residents. During large scale events, we recommend that the city closes down many roads in order to accommodate for visiting pedestrians. Outdoor dining and events could serve as advertisements for those coming from LAX. It would also attract many visitors and locals to visit our many restaurants more. When we draw attentions to restaurants during an event, not only is it gaining tourists, it is also highlighting these areas for our own locals. We have quite a few options when it comes to advertising for all these events. However, we believe that there are a few extremely promising outliers. First, we have to think about the most efficient way to get the most engagement with our advertising for a reasonable amount. Our answer to that was to put advertisements for El Segundo on digital billboards inside the LAX airport. Specifically next to the baggage carousels to maximize exposure to them. This is a great way to attract tourism to those looking for their first bite to attract more people to stay. It would be easier to place ads on websites such as LAX for people looking to book tickets. This is the best way to engage those already looking to stay in LA to come to El Segundo. There are many online tools such as Google Ads that allows to easily put out the word about El Segundo. Another softer form of advertisement is social media. It could be a good idea to hold a contest within the high school or to those outside willing to participate. To post social media videos related to the businesses around El Segundo. There are already many businesses in popular cities that use social media to advertise. Incentivizing residents to post about the city would be the best way to ensure that the posts are relevant. For locals not wishing to buy a ticket, it may be a good idea to hold a movie in the park event or the game day.
We used a cultural fair in Sydney to gather data on the effectiveness of a cultural fair. It showcased multiple migrant artists, dance performances, creative workshops and such. They found that identification with an ethnic group as one's primary community reinforces norms, values and identities. And provides members with social support systems that help them address the demands of a new society. And has implications for their quality of life, belonging and well-being. One of the participants even stated, it is a place to express yourself and everything you want to do. It's like you have permission to do something. It's not the same. Over there, the cultural fair is just natural. The cultural fair allowed participants to practice ethnic identities and create a sense of home and safety. Thus, it is considered central to the production of a sense of groupness among attendees. Our cultural festival can provide a home away from home and leave a burst of visitors to embrace each other's cultures in this plan for social stability. Amping up tourists and the citizens of El Segundo. This would not only promote an increase in tourism from people all over the world, but it would promote diversity in El Segundo. This fair would be a sort of twist on our hometown fair we had recently, but bigger. In front of the school, there'd be an eagle alley consisting of the languages that El Segundo teaches at school, such as Spanish and ASL. Plus many photo booths demonstrating all the languages that the student body knows, such as German, Japanese and Korean. From the poll that our class conducted, we found that about thirty percent of people speak at least two different languages. And then forty eight point two said that they would volunteer at the cultural fair we would hold, introducing a supplemental amount of people to run the cultural fair. At least twenty percent are good to volunteer translators. All of the tourists who come to these wonderful events can feel at ease by possibly communicating in their original language. The student body unions such as ASU, HSU and BSU would also have their place in the festival. Running children activities and having their own booths to promote diversity, not only among the world, but in El Segundo, most importantly. Then on Main Street in front of the school, the rest of the student run clubs and organizations would reside to appeal to the children. Sell culturally appropriate snacks like Bandolse or Spamisubi and just have multiple fun activities for the whole family. There would be interesting games from all over the world such as Mexican Lotteria, Italian Bachi, Japanese Kendama. And South Korean Jeje Chagi, to name a few. For those who would not want to run around as much, there would be arts and crafts activities such as color your own, papel picado, homemade passports. LA twenty eight, Olympic color your own logo, Native American dream catchers, Japanese origami. Teach basic cute phrases, a pen pal booth where children can connect with each other around the world through letters. Global flag banners to represent their countries, Australian Aboriginal dot painting, Swedish dala horse painting. And Indian Rangoli art, Chinese lanterns and Mexican paper flowers. And the festival could not go on without some music, right? We would utilize Library Park as an area for live performances from the school orchestra, choir and band. We would also hire culturally significant music groups like mariachi, taiko drumming groups and samba schools. To showcase the power of Brazilian music.
Lastly, the fair would extend all the way to Grand on Main Street, filled to the brim with multiple booths from the small businesses and restaurants located in El Segundo. We would coordinate with the usual groups that attend the Main Street Fair and Farmer's Market. Plus, there would be additional booths to sell merchandise that can hopefully be licensed by the Olympics, Super Bowl, or World Cup. It could even be merchandise geared more towards El Segundo, like an eagle or t-shirts. All in all, El Segundo would become a hub for diversity, and this cultural festival celebrating all ways of life could even end up becoming an annual event, as long as everything stated above turns out as planned.
Our committee is focusing on the slow-moving transportation network in El Segundo and everything encompassing it. This means changes to the way major roads are set up, bike lanes, e-bike safety, travel routes for slow-moving vehicles, beautifying streets for pedestrians, and promoting the use of the network altogether. Some ways we could implement changes to the major streets, such as Grand Avenue and Main Street, are making the sidewalks hybrid spaces for both walking and outdoor dining space. Since the right lane isn't used as much, we can place a parallel parking space on the right lane so that I can increase parking space on Grand. That means the left lane will be used by cars and slow-moving vehicles such as bikes or scooters. We even asked the community whether people would use the local travel network more if lanes and routes were more available. Majority of people, thirty point four percent, expressed that they would use it somewhat often. This correlated directly with the following question that asked whether this community would like a bike lane on Main Street and slash or Grand Avenue. Most people, sixty-five point two percent, said that they would like lanes on both of these big streets. This is a crucial statistic because it indicates that making these improvements would allow more activity on the local travel network.
Other ideas include installing clear and informative signage on roads to help the public navigate routes and made more aware of local travel network. While there are signs currently in numerous locations, it is not effective enough on its own to publicize the local travel network. We believe making a few changes to the title of the sign, but still keeping the same color palette turtle design will be more eye-catching and informative. The key word, "slow-moving," indicated that the routes are tailored towards low-emissions, slow-moving vehicles instead of the current sign that includes local travel network.
Downtown Los Angeles holds eight bike events on Sundays during the summer called Sic La Via. It spans seven point eight miles and covers many prime locations in the heart of Los Angeles. Throughout the course, bikers can stop at specific mile markers to pick up free merch or bike gear sponsored by big companies. At the end of the seven point eight mile bike ride, we're greeted by many food trucks and eating places. Annually, this event is nonprofit, but still raises two point three million dollars in foods and small businesses. We are suggesting a Sic La Via on a smaller scale for El Segundo. Here's an idea for the event map that would take place around El Segundo, where it would start and where it would end. Our goal is to start by the beach at the intersection of Grand Avenue and Vista Del Mar and end at City Hall. The end will have many food trucks and booths sponsored by small businesses and local food trucks similar to the farmer's markets on Main Street. We could even have a raffle or auction booth to give away prizes such as free meal to a restaurant or coupons. There also could be a second, smaller route for younger children and families. We would call this event the El Segundo Beachside Bike-A-Thon. Partnering with local businesses could prove useful as they can offer discounts to bikes or even bike rentals for the day of the event.
The metro's public shuttle, called Micro Metro, operates twenty-four seven. The cost of a ticket is two dollars and draws in almost five hundred people daily in different parts of Los Angeles. Just like the Micro Metro, we should incorporate a shuttle system in El Segundo. An example of this in action would be the hourly shuttle services that were in place prior to COVID nineteen. Creating our own shuttle service would benefit everyone, including tourists and visitors. Especially this upcoming summer, shuttles would head down to the beach and all throughout El Segundo. Some possible stops could include: First, corner of Main Street and Mariposa; Second, Richmond and Grand; Third, Mariposa and Center; Fourth, Center and Grand; Fifth, Grand and Lumita; Sixth, Main and Grand; Seventh, Holly and Grand; Eighth, Grand and Vista Del Mar; Ninth, Richmond and Grand; Tenth, Imperial Avenue and Main. We propose a Monday-through-Saturday schedule from eleven AM to four thirty PM. A shuttle can stop by every thirty minutes or through an app that tracks the shuttles in real time. And we could have two to three buses circulating half hourly. We can use local newspapers, social media, community boards, and schools to market the shuttle plan and develop an app to facilitate where and when buses will be.
To end this segment of the video, we remind you of the importance of this project for the city. By implementing changes such as community bicycle event improved signage and increased e-bike safety measures, we can address current challenges and promote sustainable transportation options.
One of the things that we polled for was, did people want stop signs on Main Street removed? And forty point seven percent of people wanted stop signs on Main Street to be changed to stoplights. This is because we want to replace the right-hand lane with a slow-moving travel network lane and also to get rid of parking in the downtown part of Main Street. But how would we be able to do this? In order for this to work, we need to change the side street to one-way street, with Pine Avenue having a one-way, west-traffic-only in the downtown area and Holly Avenue moving east. Both streets will have diagonal parking that will be able to hold the same amount of vehicles yet out of the way of direct eyesight. This plan also allows the sidewalk or outdoor eating area to be expanded further outwards than the current El Segundo downtown plan. Back to the poll. The issue with this plan is that cars and traffic will be backed up quickly if a stop sign is present instead of a stoplight, like on Pine Avenue in Franklin, but primarily focusing on Pine Avenue so that traffic doesn't move onto side streets and residential areas. This plan will make El Segundo more clean with less visible cars and better accessibility for the slow-moving travel network.
The El Segundo downtown is a beautiful district for food and shopping, and we have come up with a plan to keep it growing and innovative. Right now, Main Street has four lanes. This causes unnecessary backup at stop signs and makes it less bike-accessible. By combining the lanes on Main into one big road with a bike lane on the right and left turn lanes, we believe traffic flow will be greatly improved and promote clean transportation. Planting trees and flowers, hanging vibrant baskets from light poles, putting in planters and benches for pedestrians, and commissioning murals or other works of art are all part of a Main Street beautification project. Repainting storefronts and coordinating color schemes is another step in creating a visually beautiful cityscape. In collaboration with the farmer's market, pop-up shops and a vintage slash food stand could invigorate the downtown area by offering a unique shopping and dining experience. Plan involves better advertising and more food trucks, setting up snack stands in El Porto, hosting Friday night events with games and music, organizing live music festivals, providing shuttles to the beach due to limited parking, and establishing a teen center to rent out beach games and equipment for free. On lamp posts and streetlights, hang flags and banners. It will encourage local businesses to decorate storefront windows seasonally, use string lights and themed decorations like snowflakes or flowers, opting for energy-efficient LED lights, and seasonal events and parades such as a spring festival or winter holiday parade. For example, setting up interactive displays like a pumpkin patch for Halloween or Santa's workshop for Christmas. Restaurants like DePonica are very popular, creating a high demand for parking at the strip mall in El Segundo. Current parking lot is insufficient, leading to difficulties for visitors and finding spots and navigating the tight space. Improving parking availability is essential to address these challenges. A smellatizer, a device that releases pleasant scents, can enhance the ambiance of a downtown area by emitting aromas like coffee, flowers, or bread. This sensory addition can improve mood, attract more pedestrians, and boost local business activity. Additionally, strategically-placed smellatizers can mask unpleasant urban odors, especially the Hyperion, contributing to a cleaner and more appealing city environment. We plan to market El Segundo as a clean and inviting city by using smellatizers to enhance its ambiance. Prioritizing sustainability and water management, we aim to attract environmentally-conscious businesses, creating a desirable playa vista feel and transforming public perception. Improving downtown lighting enhances safety and creates a welcoming ambiance. The Mariposa and Main intersection in El Segundo shows this with a festive, adjustable lighting that attracts visitors. Extending this throughout downtown will boost safety, community, and nighttime commerce. Right now, this space on Main is currently underused. We want to vertically expand buildings, allowing for residential development on the top and maintain the shops and restaurants at the bottom. The city should set up interactive exhibits showcasing the latest advancements in sports technology. They should partner with local tech startups and entrepreneurs, create a dedicated area where they can showcase their innovation related to sports, fitness, and wellness. The city should establish a number of artistic statues around the city. These statues serve as a medium of creating photo opportunities in El Segundo, increasing word of mouth, giving the city opportunities to support local artists, and possibly with the help of Esmoa.
Yeah.
Uh, not guilty? I plead. I plead the fifth. I'm so nervous. You guys did really good. Okay.
Okay. Okay, we're gonna start with our questions. So, Tim, we'll start with you.
Specifically about Olympics and World Cup, have you thought about maybe arranging anything with SoFi Stadium to try to bring in a lot of that tourism and business for those events?
No, we wanted it to be more based here. We were thinking about doing like a mini-games at our own like areas and rec park, and that way our own restaurants and our own local businesses are affected.
Super Bowl and World Cup for your merch?
Um, well, the hope was that we could get that, but if not, um, we could make our own mini-one and have an off-brand one.
So, I have two questions that go together. So, first would be, how many people do you expect to come to the cultural fair you will hold? Like, approximate amount. I don't need exactly, of course.
Um, well, we were planning about it being like an annual thing, so once we get it known, like we want El Segundo to be known as like a really unique city, which is why we want all of these like statues and whatever murals. So, the cultural fair, um, we want it to be like an annual thing, so slowly build up more attraction. And that way, when people do come to visit for the Olympics, Super Bowl, World Cup, whatever, they know about that event and therefore they want to stay in El Segundo. So, it's kind of just like a grabbing.
Okay, and so, basically, I would take out that you expect plenty of people to come, and if they do, how do they come here in the first place? Because there is a big issue with parking right now. And it would be tough for them if they don't live in El Segundo, of course. Okay, so, how do you expect people to come to the event if there is a big issue with parking in the downtown of El Segundo, given that a lot of the visitors will probably not be from El Segundo?
Well, with the downtown renovation, there's a lot of plans that are in place to renovate and improve the parking developments that are currently in El Segundo. So, not only we're gonna provide new areas and options for people to park here, but also there's gonna be multiple transportation from these events, especially such as like SoFi and stuff like that, to improve it, so.
We also, we also reached out to, um, golf cart companies and potentially we could integrate that, so that way we wouldn't have to worry about so many cars.
Thank you. Oh, one question per person. Sorry about that. Mac, do you have a question?
I do have a question. Thank you. First of all, I wanted to say that I really liked your idea, your guys' idea for the cultural, um, fair. I thought that was really unique. And I wanted to ask specifically about the statues and like how somebody would help pay for that and also where they would go after, if they would stay, because I feel like, um, very like event-specific, um, decorations, it would be a little difficult if they were just very like pretty specific. So, how could we like keep them around longer? Where would they go if they were really specific?
So, as far as like statues, like for the renovation, or are you saying for the cultural fair?
Um, for both, like if they...
Yeah, so for the downtown, just a landmark of like things that mean a lot to the city that give us an identity, because we're trying to separate ourselves from other cities while creating like, I guess what was said in the, the video, like a specific like ambiance that like people basically just like know and like can like put a name or like a face to like our city with, you know, something that creates a unique stuff. And then about the cultural fair, like...
Well, the statues for the cultural fair, we would want to keep here and have people know about it, especially if we want it to be an annual event.
Thank you.
Adam, do you have a question?
Uh, yeah, so I, I really applauded you guys' movement towards, uh, alternate transportation, but I was just curious how you'd ensure traffic is still manageable with, uh, with only one lane on Main Street when peaks can be really big, especially during school pickup and drop-off, and how you'd make sure El Segundo is still easily navigable with multiple streets shut down.
So, uh, so we will, uh, we will like, uh, what was it? Uh, ensure like a one-way, uh, uh, one-way lane, uh, going out, outside, right? So, there's, so we got Main Street, right? So, if we ensure like a one-way street going this way and, and another one-way street going that way, uh, that would, uh, probably like, uh, lessen the traffic. Are, are you talking about traffic?
I am kind of talking about traffic in the context that you mentioned, um, converting the right lane of Main Street into a bike lanes.
Oh, uh, so, um, so like...
Yeah, so, basically, like, the idea is that if this plan was to be taken in place, that, that the right lane currently as it is is basi- basically like kind of like blocked by a lot of parking. So, if we were able to convert this already like small lane into like a bike lane, where it could be more multipurpose, we would diversify like all the cars that are already like going through the Main Street. It would be moved to the side streets so that not only the, the traffic is already like being dealt with, but now it's creating more options to, for the slow travel network, just basically just giving another like opportunity to like showcase.
So, you'd encourage more travel on residential streets?
Uh, yeah, it would, obviously, it would have to flow through other streets because the, the cars have to go somewhere else, you know? If we're trying to take them away from Main Street to create a new lane, so.
Thank you.
Patrick?
Yeah, I thought you guys had some very good ideas. I just have one quick question. And, um, how do you guys actually plan on setting up recreational equipment at the beach, being that they belong to LA City and not El Segundo?
Well, if we were to work on certain projects with the beach, we'd obviously have to be working with LA, uh, LA County, basically, we'd just have to be working with them if we were trying to do anything with the beach. But because El, El Segundo has its beach, a name that puts like El Porto is basically, or like, not El Porto, uh, we have El Segundo Beach. It's basically with our name. We basically can put like, talk with the city and put like certain events possibly and communicate with LA County because they're using our name, so we might as well be able to like, be able to represent ourselves.
Thank you.
Um, I loved all your guys' ideas of like the different like ways to get everyone involved, but you mentioned a lot of like shutting down streets, but still having golf carts. Can you guys explain that a little? And like, how long are these streets gonna be shut down? Like, it's a little hard to like shut down streets, so can you guys just explain that a little?
Um, well, we were...
So, um, essentially, we reached out to a golf cart company and we determined that we would be able to actually get the golf carts for it. So, essentially, you were talking about, uh, residential streets, right? Um, so, essentially, we'd have the one-way lanes, right, as, along with the, uh, golf carts. So, the golf carts would already minimize traffic as it's a slow-moving vehicle. It's smaller than cars, but also the one, uh, way traffic. It would just allow the one, like the bike lane and the, um, smaller, or and the one lane, or the one lane, not the one-way street on, uh, Main to, um, be less crowded because of the smaller vehicles.
Awesome, thank you.
Um, kind of similar, you guys were talking about the bike race, which I thought was a great idea, and I think it would bring in a bunch of, um, just people. But you thought about using, I want to say Imperial to, um, was it Vista Del Mar, I want to say? Those are major like streets, and I feel like really hard to shut those down, also just cause a lot of traffic issues. What would you guys like plan if you couldn't do that? Or like, what was your plan of doing that, then?
Um, we were kind of inspired by the Sic La Via, um, event that goes on during downtown LA, and they do like shut down major streets for that event, and so we kind of inspire that for El Segundo. And even though it will like shut down some major streets, we think that this is a very worthwhile event that anyone can attend. And it is definitely provide like outreach for the local travel network, especially because, um, it's not just like servicing to like people who already own bikes, but also we're proposing that Bikarama or other bike rental places can kind of rent out bikes to anyone who can use it. And it's also less about a race, but more so just getting people out there for like, you know, however long they want to ride the bike. And also, the incentive would be like the food trucks, uh, specific raffles that go on. I know that Hometown Fair did do some raffles last time, and so we think that we can bring in that. And so, it was like, we think that this is a worthwhile event, that even though like some major roads may be closed, that, um, I think the result of it is more important.
Awesome. Luke, do you have a question?
I do. Uh, I really liked your idea about the cultural fair. I think it's...
Uh, I really liked your idea about the cultural fair. I think it's, I think it's good. But, uh, would it, would this be something funded completely by the city, or will you have help from private companies? And, oh wait, am I only allowed to ask one question? Okay, nevermind, that's the end of my question.
So, essentially, depending on advertising, if, uh, private companies would like to actually advertise, then yeah, we'd be open to that. Uh, allowing, uh, private companies to either have like a poster or anything like that, um, as long as it fits and doesn't disrupt the cultural fair. But also, we would have to have a lot of the areas, like for example, police presence funded by the city, uh, to ensure the safety of the attendees of the cultural fair.
Alright, thank you. I really like how we're combating the, uh, the smell of Hyperion with the, uh, smellalyzer. Um, is there any way that, like, we've seen that work before? Like, any examples you guys wanna explain, or is this just an idea? Um, well, actually, there's a prime example of Disneyland. Disneyland's downtown, uh, district is made for, uh, their use of the smells to encourage people to spend money at their vendors. And basically just create an atmosphere of identity for Disneyland. So, if we're able to any way like represent that with local businesses, we can definitely attract people to not only combat the smell of Hyperion, but be able to encourage, uh, local businesses to, uh, promote smells and stuff of maybe food and things like that to attract, uh, more people to come down to the downtown area. My favorite smell? Well, it definitely wouldn't be the gasoline, oil, or Chevron Hyperion. So, definitely, probably, well, we got, we got Vinny's Pizza, that would be a good smell, I feel like. But yeah, there's many smells for different businesses.
James, you got anything? Alright, period two, I think you guys had great ideas, very organized, so great work. And here's period three. This is, this is where we're gonna take a little break, if we need one, a little five, three to five-minute break. We'll be back here ten sixteen, be back. That's three minutes, but I am going to... Period three's project now.
This is Mr. Gas Political Behavior Period Three Class Civic Project. To bring in revenue and excitement to El Segundo during the Olympics, Super Bowl, and the World Cup. We have ideas to create enhanced advertisement, transportation, and festivities in El Segundo. Sixty-two thousand people are expected to attend the Super Bowl, and we are aiming to get two or four percent to visit or stay in El Segundo. Three hundred and twenty-six thousand are expected to attend the Olympics, and we hope for one or two percent of the attendees to visit. And five hundred thousand spectators are expected to come to LA for the World Cup Games, and we hope to get one or two percent of that visit. With these given amounts, we have adapted our events to be able to accommodate such a large number. To encourage more visitors to be joining to El Segundo, visitors staying at our hotels only will receive special discounts at designated local restaurants that will depend on what the restaurant is comfortable with. These discounts will bring visitors from their hotels in the outskirts of El Segundo and into our downtown area, creating a more bustling atmosphere. To continue the buzz towards El Segundo, we are hosting a vibrant fair at Rec Park and/or Grand and Main Street during these major events. The streets and businesses will be decorated with streamers, banners, signs, lights, flags, and confetti, spreading team spirit. Local businesses and restaurants will have booths or tents to showcase their unique offerings inspired by the farmer's market. To, to incorporate elements unique to LA, local sports teams like the Chargers, Rams, Kings, and Lakers will participate to attract fans from neighboring cities. Brands with establishments or headquarters in El Segundo such as Mattel, Boeing, Chevron, and Topgolf can join in to sell their products and promote their services. To make it as inclusive as possible, entertainment options will include games and activities such as face painting, temporary tattoos, and many events that mimic the games of the current sports events. We'll also have bounce houses and carnival games like beanbag and water balloon tosses to make it a truly lively experience. ESHS and ESMS will provide live entertainment through their choir, band, orchestra, color guard, and cheer teams. While ESHS sports teams will fundraise through bake sales and merchandise sales. By doing this, we will show visitors the exciting parts of El Segundo and Los Angeles as well as bring them. To increase hype, we will host exciting events where Olympic athletes will come to El Segundo to share inspiring stories and interact with their fans up close through Q&amp;A sessions, photo opportunities, and signs, merchandise. There will be bounce houses, face painting, and other family-friendly activities at our local recreation park, capturing the spirit of sportsmanship, joy, and lasting memories. To address parking with the large amount of people coming in, we will arrange for vacant or rented parking structures around El Segundo to be available for visitors. Like the old ninety-nine cent store parking lot, during the summers, we would use the ESHS staff lot and the Richmond Street parking lot. Parking spots can be purchased in advance for the desired duration using metered parking for individual spots along Main Street, Richmond Street, and Grand. Then, for convenience for El Segundo residents, we will arrange passes for them so they are exempt from paying on the meters and in the lots. This will be crucial in creating more ease for visitors, especially when El Segundo has limited parking.
Besides parking, another important topic to address is increasing revenue for local businesses. This is why we're introducing a restaurant bingo competition. Customers will receive a bingo card upon entry into their first El Segundo business establishment. Each participating business will have a spot on the bingo card, which consumers can cross off after spending a minimum of ten dollars. Businesses will have unique stamps to verify purchases.
Completing a bingo pattern earns rewards provided by the city of El Segundo, like World Cup tickets. Additionally, just turning in the card gets a small prize, like a jersey or a ball. Participating restaurants will provide bingo cards, and they will be included in our previously mentioned hotel brochures. Restaurants will display flags outside to show they're part of the bingo game. This will improve the atmosphere and economic state of the El Segundo dining establishments. To enhance nightlife, we are looking to extend the town curfew, which will attract a lo- a lar- a younger crowd and boost the local businesses. We're partnering with a shuttle service to ensure everyone can enjoy the events held in El Segundo. The shuttle will operate during the events, transporting friends to and from designated drop-off locations for the Olympics and to and from El Segundo hotels. This service will be advertised with brochures at LAX airports, bus stops, social media ads, and possible billboards.
So that tourists can have all of these events and discounts in one place, we will pass out a brochure that includes all the information they would need. This brochure will include information about the events at Rec Park and Main Street, the discounts at the restaurants, as well as the restaurant bingo. They'll be passed out upon entry to El Segundo hotels. The brochure will also include a map showing nearby places to visit like Topgolf, The Point, Plaza El Segundo, and the Parks in El Segundo. It will also include shuttle times and other transportation services. Finally, since many people don't attend all Olympic events or the opening and closing ceremonies, we'll have bars and local restaurants broadcasting all events, creating a social atmosphere and drawing in tourists. We'll also host live screenings at Rec Park of special moments of each sports event. For example, we will host a screening of the opening and closing ceremonies of the Olympics. We'll make sure El Segundo is the perfect place to experience the excitement of these major events.
When improving the local travel network, we prioritized both the environmental and pedestrian-centered goals of the city. We designed our improvements, recommendations, and educational elements around fostering safety, longevity, and comfort. To reach these goals, we divided our plan into three primary components: road design, education, and promotion. We proposed designing Main Street and Grand Avenue around structures that make pedestrians and cyclists as comfortable as possible, all while protecting the safety of drivers and preventing collisions of any kind. On Main Street, we proposed two lanes divided by a center median with parallel parking on the outside of each lane. A bike lane placed between the sidewalk and parking would be painted green and protected by planters or other permanent barriers. To protect pedestrians and cyclists at stop signs and streetlights, street parking will end and the bike lane will widen to allow an unobstructed view to drivers. On Grand Avenue, we proposed using the same structures on Main Street to designate lanes and parking. At the intersection of Main and Grand, we also recommend adding additional traffic lights that specifically signal to cyclists to ensure visibility and safe crossings. Several examples of these streetlights have been incorporated in numerous cities in the Los Angeles area, with great success in areas with heavier traffic and concerns over visibility. Especially regarding the permanent designation of bike lanes on Main and Grand, forty-two point six percent of El Segundo residents were only somewhat satisfied with the current bike lanes. And seventy-one point eight percent expressed interest in using bike lanes in the city if this improvement was made. Increased signage and traffic light systems were also supported by sixty-eight point nine percent respectively, ensuring our design is aligned with the community's desires for improvement, change, and incentive to use the network.
This is the city's preferred concept for Richmond Street and the one other alternative concept. We believe the alternative concept, which incorporates a promenade between Franklin and Grand, is the best direction for Richmond Street. This design will introduce a vibrant new space to our downtown, making the area more pedestrian and business-friendly. Franklin and Grand is a prime location next to the El Segundo Travel Network, making it perfect for setting up helpful kiosks and holding potential events involving the travel network.
To remain consistent with El Segundo's beautification goals, we hope to expand on the initiative to introduce greater tree coverage and greenery by planting trees and native plants in the center medians we proposed on Main Street and Grand Avenue. Similarly, concrete planter boxes designating the bike lanes will further the expansive greenery and provide a protective barrier for cyclists that is both visually appealing and safe.
Pictured here is a proposed map of locations to place bike racks in El Segundo. A mere fifteen point three percent of El Segundo residents are satisfied with the current amount of e-bike racks, and only thirty-five point four percent of residents would benefit from e-bike charging stations. Based on the public need, we propose to add bike racks with double charging stations in target areas around El Segundo, next to locations such as businesses, public recreation, and tourist attractions. These bike racks will allow residents to use their e-bikes to travel to desired locations around El Segundo and easily store and charge their e-bikes while they interact with the El Segundo community. We will begin a promotion and advertising campaign to attract people to begin using the new local travel network. When renting an e-bike from the local bike shop, you must take safety lessons before being allowed to ride. The bike shops will give discounts on items and gear from the shop to those who take the lessons. This will be an incentive to complete the lessons. We also hang banners on streetlights and throughout the city to further promote the travel network and safety lessons. We have also planned to place information kiosks throughout the city in locations such as City Hall and Library Park and pedestrian areas where there is a lot of foot traffic. These kiosks will have information such as the bike store locations, as well as the map of the local travel network and more information. In addition, we are going to further promote the local travel network by hosting a grand opening event to show off the new local travel network and to fundraise and promote as well. These events will be similar, so the run for Ed, with the assistance of the El Segundo Police Department and Fire Department, we can shut off certain roads and create routes for the event. In order to incorporate our local travel network, we will also work out deals with the local bike shops to provide e-bikes for rent at local hotels in the area.
The safety and knowledge of e-bikes and other forms of travel with the new travel network is crucial to help new and seasoned riders know laws and regulations in El Segundo. With the improvements of road design on Main Street and other streets mentioned previously, we want to inform the general public and community in many ways. This will help growing concerns on e-bike safety and how the community travels through El Segundo. One proposed way to educate this community includes farmer's market safety lessons every Thursday using City Hall and surrounding areas. Police and firemen would be in charge of running the program, and elected community members could also help out. Aligned with that, we would contact bike shops on Main Street to provide sample bikes for demonstration, making sure to include all three classes of e-bikes. With the lessons on e-bike safety, we plan to integrate how to use the new travel network into the lessons and make sure we inform people about the differences in road design and other changes. At these events, we could partner sponsors to distribute free or discounted safety gear like helmets, reflective vests, and lights to encourage safe riding practices. With this idea, we could attract a lot more of the community to these sessions and have more people engaged in the world of e-bikes and the local travel network. To help people get engaged, we will send out emails, newsletters, morning announcements, and more in all schools in the district to promote to students and parents. Along with the weekly events during the farmer's market, we will organize ride events that encourage families to ride together, emphasizing safe riding habits and the benefits of cycling. School programs will work with local schools to integrate bike safety education into the curriculum and organize back-to-school days.
As a committee, we effectively organized the downtown area as detailed by the downtown specific plan into three sections in order to have a specialized idea for each. The primary section was the civic center area with an overarching goal of completely redesigning for community use. The second section is the entirety of Main Street with an overarching goal of promoting local businesses and restaurants in the area. And the third section is Restaurant Street with the main goal being to highlight the historical factors in the area to serve a niche purpose the rest of downtown just off.
First reason will be for the civic center. The plan is to replace most of the concrete areas with grass and leave some concrete for walking paths, add benches, trashcans, and fences wherever needed. A very important part will also be the blue butterfly bushes or sea cliff buckwheat, which are a necessity and will be added along the walkpath. Additionally, we have plans to add bushes along Main Street area with informational signs detailing the importance of the bushes. We will also construct a very small park where families can relax and have fun with a picnic or eating area near it. Adding an outdoor amphitheater will also be beneficial for holding events and small concerts. The amphitheater will have seating options and shade for the audience's convenience. Implementing lighting around the civic center is also nece- necessary to keep it well lit when it gets dark. Additionally, with a separate grass area across the street from Stuffed Pizza and the area behind the police station, we will be adding picnic tables and other outdoor ceilings for community use. We plan to advertise and have an opening event for the whole area, hopefully coordinating with the restaurants on Main Street to draw people in from all around the South Bay.
Additionally, we came up with some more photos that we decided would best demonstrate our final goals of redesigning the civic center. By removing most of the concrete and replacing it with grass, it will create a comfortable space for recreational activities such as picnic, yoga, or sports like soccer. And the space can also be used for small community gatherings and special events. We removed the idea of having a dog park because it caused some challenges such as blocking the entrance to the police station. We also decided to shrink down our playground to a mini playground so it would not obstruct the view of the amphitheater or be too distracting to visitors. Ensuring that we provided public restrooms in the civic center and elsewhere downtown was crucial. Additionally, when we created our plan, we wanted to ensure that there was still plenty of walking area around Main Street, so we expanded sidewalks minorly. This minor change will cause no traffic issues or any rezoning, but it will make a drastic difference in walkability.
In a poll we conducted, a total of eighty-eight percent of one-twenty-six of our one-forty-four responders either somewhat or strongly agreed or felt neutral that improvements could be made to the aesthetics of the El Segundo downtown area. With the drastic number of civilians open to a positive change in the downtown area, we prioritize this section greatly. The civic center is a mostly unused area with extreme potential, which is why a major chunk of ideas spurred from this space.
The next part of the downtown area that we are redesigning is Richmond Street. One thing that we focused on was the idea of mixed-use building, incorporating business on the bottom street floor and residential situated above. Included in these ideas are a more accessible pedestrian experience with increased outdoor seating in front of existing or new restaurants. We believe outdoor seating in a thriving pedestrian environment is critical to enhancing the downtown experience. To further increase the pedestrian pedestrian experience, we plan to change the lighting to better fit the theme of the surrounding area as well as incorporating banners to advertise local businesses or events. The last important aspect of the street will be signage outside of the businesses. Simple street signs can do a lot to enhance the look of the street while drawing in attention of pedestrians.
It is crucial to our strategy to arrange events that dive into our historical, events, periods, and figures. By showcasing the extensive history of Richmond and its vicinity, we establish strong ties to the community's historical background. We specifically wanted to incorporate historical aspects, since sixty-eight point seven or ninety-seven responders feel that highlighting historical aspects of the town would enhance its charm. This includes working together with individuals who live in the area to discover their distinct stories. Collaborating with other museums and private collectors such as Esmoa enables us to incorporate different perspectives. To help direct our work, we intend to create advisory panels made up of historians, teachers, and local influencers. Including art pieces rel- related to history or art can attract more people to events where these pieces can be sold or showcased. Adding architectural elements with integrated greenery would make the space livelier. With the new ninety-nine cent store building available, we believe transforming that currently abandoned building into a Trader Joe's as well as adding additional apartment housing on top would be beneficial to the community. On top of the apartments, we would like to add some greenery such as vines that draped on the side of the building to give the town a clearer and more nature-oriented look. As well as reconstructing the downtown area, we also want to bring more attention to El Segundo's local businesses. One hundred and thirty-one out of the one hundred and forty-four respondents are enthusiastic about holding more fairs and festivals in downtown El Segundo. With one hundred and ten out of one hundred and thirty-one responders being significantly interested in a business fair. Hosting a local business fair would be a fantastic way to unite our community and spew our diverse range of local enterprises. It would boost awareness and support for businesses, espo- especially smaller ones with less visibility. This event would not only drive economic growth by encouraging residents to shop locally, but would also foster connections and a sense of belonging among residents.
Arranging a business fair at Ruck Park involves thorough planning and collaboration. You need to keep in mind the weather conditions are suitable for an outdoor event. In order to get attention from the community about a fair, we could post it on social media, promote it in the local newspaper, collaborate with community partnerships, meaning encouraging other people to share information with others. With careful planning and community involvement, the business fair can become a highly anticipated and impactful event for El Segundo.
Besides our events and local scenery, El Segundo is also home to a diverse selection of restaurants. From Brazilian food to Vietnamese cuisine, we want the public to explore these options. Guy Fury's latest show, Best Bite in Town, can help spread awareness about our local restaurants. On the show, he tries local dishes to find the best bite in town.
Fury TV show, it could be a huge opportunity to showcase El Segundo's diverse food scene to a bigger audience. By featuring our local restaurants and their popular dishes, the show can help generate interest and excitement both locally and beyond. Additionally, leveraging the popularity with the TV show can significantly boost awareness about the food and businesses El Segundo has to offer. This exposure could also attract more visitors to our town. Our plan for it to be successful is to get in contact with him and his team and hopefully get a response which could lead to the TV show coming down and having a taste of the restaurants of their choices.
With all these ideas, we decided to make a website to organize and present them to the community. Onscreen now is our website model specifically for the downtown segment of our proposal, complete with visual representations and explanations of our ideas, existing ideas, and a survey tag.
Okay, um, which side are we on? Yeah, we can start on this side. Carter, do you have a question? Wait, they're coming up, hold on. Alright, go ahead.
Alright, uh, so I was wondering, um, how you expected to like regulate the World Cup tickets you was, uh, speaking about earlier in your video? Uh, and like not get people to forge them? Like, how exactly would you do that? Because a lot of stamps are easily replicable and we don't want the city just giving away free money without actually spending money, uh, at local restaurants.
Uh, we'll use custom stamps, so no one else can use it. Each restaurant will have a custom stamp, you know? And if it's really that big of a deal, you know, we could use their, like, we could go back in time and check the receipts and stuff. Like, I don't know how to.
Also, um, just because you like, uh, win the bingo doesn't mean that you automatically get the World Cup tickets. Once you win the World Cup bingo, you're entered into a raffle and that's where you win. So that like probability of you forging it, getting into the raffle and then winning the raffle is pretty like unlikely, so.
Alright, James, do you have anything for us?
Uh, I like your idea for the e-bike safety courses, but, uh, we already do have a lot of guidelines and, um, things like that in place. So, uh, and we do have a lot of accidents and like rule breakers already. So I was wondering what your plan was to enforce those new guidelines and, uh, what you have to offer that we haven't already tried to implement.
Um, a big part of our plan and the reason that we specifically mentioned in the video that we wanted to address the schools in particulars because we are very aware that most of the reckless incidents tend to happen with younger people. So we wanted to essentially motivate not only students but also their parents to kind of motivate their kids to go to safety lessons or at least to have, you know, some kind of community outreach. We also, with the advertisements that we have, it's gonna, ideally, it would be everywhere essentially. Um, while we can't necessarily do anything about the specific legislation that's in place, we are also hoping that the increased signage and just the increase in awareness amongst the public themselves of what the safety regulations are, how to follow them, um, how to stay safe. You know, if you do see someone that's behaving in a way that could put other people in danger, we're hoping that just increasing the amount of knowledge that people in El Segundo have and the amount of access that they have to that knowledge, especially for free and especially, you know, on a somewhat regular basis at least. We're hoping that that's gonna be the way that we can really, you know, access the population that needs that information the most, but also help the older generations and other pedestrians or other people that don't even wanna ride e-bikes but just need to know, you know, what's the best way to keep myself as a pedestrian safe. So we're hoping that all of those things will come together to to be what we really need to enforce a lot of the safety protections.
Alright, Johnson.
Um, I just had a question about, uh, the Olympics. So I know you guys said you wanted to have some athletes come down. Um, I was just kinda like, uh, confused on how that's kinda possible. I mean, most Olympic athletes are gonna need time to rest and what's really in it for them to, uh, come down and share some stories?
Um, I think it would depend on whatever event would be happening. We're not saying like specifically Olympic events, but like if let's say the Rams or the Chargers, some teams that are local, were in the Super Bowl or you have the US woman, uh, US men's or women's national team for soccer and like the World Cup can definitely come down and I, it's possible. Other cities have done it too.
Uh, yeah, I just had a question on the the parking spots. Just so I'm getting this clear, people in El Segundo would have a parking pass that's not, that outsiders wouldn't have?
Um, yeah, specifically residents, so you would just apply for a parking pass to like show that you do have like, um, is it like a residential, like you live in El Segundo and you'd just be exempt from paying the parking meters? But the parking meters would only be put in place while these events would be happening.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, can you tell me a little more about how to promote public events in the civic area?
Okay, so, um, we know that, as you guys touched on with, I think it was period one, the civic center already has a specific purpose and our goal wasn't to completely redesign and get rid of all of the civic centers that it can't serve that purpose, but to enhance it so that it has its, it has other purposes. So that's why we made sure that we still had that outdoor amphitheater for any events. We wanted to make sure we had lots of like grass area and pic- sorry, picnic benches so that it could still serve the purpose that it's intended for. But as people are downtown or looking for somewhere to go or meet up with friends, that was an area that they would also consider.
Patrick, you got anything?
Uh, yeah, I just have a question. So you guys want to offer discounts for completing the bike safety course? How do you plan on actually incentivizing businesses to participate, being that somebody has to incur that cost for a discount?
Yeah, so with those courses, we were thinking that the bike shops would be interested and also, cause it's their field, they wanna promote safety too, so it'd be another reason for them to promote their shops.
Also, because the city's like really trying to get more people interested in purchasing these bikes, it's really gonna drive a lot of business to local shops as opposed to bigger companies maybe even. Like, I know we have a lot, like REI, I know you can buy like electric bikes there. So what, you know, would draw residents to local bike shops, that would be the draw in large part for the businesses to offer discounts on gear and bikes themselves.
Adam, go ahead.
Oh, yeah, so, um, I I liked your idea about having bike lanes, but I wanted to ask about the type of bike lanes. As limiting the visibility of the bikes can pose a significant hazard to cyclists. Those types of bike lanes are installed on Venice Boulevard and I can say from personal experience, they're a bit unnerving to ride in, especially with the number of distracted drivers because you only see the cars at the last minute and those bu- types of bike lanes are kind of universally disliked amongst cyclists from blog posts. So I just, I just wanted to ask how you'd be able to hand- handle safety on those.
The reason that we decided to go with that specific design for bike lanes was based off of a collection of different research papers that we looked at that surveyed cyclists in different major cities. And generally, we found, um, I can't speak for personal experience, but we found that the testimony tended to be that cyclists and pedestrians both felt safer when there was a much stronger divide between cars and cyclists and pedestrians. Um, it's also, it benefits El Segundo that we have slow-moving streets, you know, you're not the only, the fastest street in El Segundo is, I think, thirty-five miles per hour, and we wouldn't have these kinds of bike lanes there. So we're talking about like twenty-five miles per hour, maybe even twenty, you know, we're really narrowing down the traffic on Main Street. So it's gonna be a lot slower than you might see in other places and it's actually gonna be a lot more compact than you would see in other places, so. But that is something to consider for, you know, maybe moving back, you know, a little bit further than we might have initially envisioned. But generally speaking, we found that all of those factors would make it safe for pedestrian cyclists and drivers.
Thank you.
First of all, I wanted to say that, um, personally, I enjoy the idea of a Trader Joe's in the ninety-nine area. But, um, so good job with that one. But I'm also wanted to ask, you guys mentioned including the, I think it was like buckwheat bushes in the civic center to promote blue butterflies in El Segundo, which I think is great. I just wanted to, um, cause I think I remember hearing that they are in an endangered species, I believe. Um, I wanted to know how you guys would promote the protection of the butterflies as well as them being more present in our community.
Well, um, as we touched on in the video, we accompanying these, um, bushes or just kind of implemented around downtown, we wanted to include informational kiosks or, uh, like billboard, or not a billboard, uh, um, signage of some sort. So that would include some historical context and important things for civilians to know in order to protect the, both the butterflies and the bushes.
I do not think so, sorry. Going next.
Uh, I really want to say that I'm quite fond of the idea of historic kind of restoration of the Richmond Street and making citizens more aware of the history of El Segundo. And in your video, you mentioned that you would contact individuals and retell their stories related to El Segundo. So have you contacted any particular individuals and what kind of stories would you expect them to tell?
As we can, we did not, in our limited time and the amount of contacts that we had, we haven't yet contacted anyone specifically. However, we did plan on talking to Esmoa, who I already know has a very strong outreach program in that sense of collecting individual stories and art and history, and they could help us navigate that aspect of our plan.
Um, also touching like the art, not necessarily like the historic side, but also like, there's a lot of like local artists that Blue Butterfly also like sponsors and hangs artwork up and I'm sure that like people, like smaller artists or smaller, yeah, artists would like to share their artwork, even if it, even if they aren't like making millions off of it.
Thank you.
So I really like the idea of the the bike, um, racks and the e-bike chargers. I was just confused on where would you, how would you know which would be the perfect spot to put these, um, chargers, not the e-bike chair?
Um, so we did a poll, uh, and that's where, I think it was, is it Connor? Oh, yeah, Connor, um, he did a poll and said and asked where like people would like these bike stations to be and that's what those blue like little marks were on the map.
Tim, you got anything? Alright, well, period three, I think it was great, got the area at the end was awesome, as well as the website and the bingo card. Love it all, great job.
... plan ahead of exciting upcoming sporting events. Join us as we build a brighter, more connected community. But first, how do we get the word out about all these new changes to El Segundo?
Our target audience is local residents, business owners, potential residents, tourists slash visitors, investors, and community organizations. For our local residents, we can get the word out through community meetings, keeping everyone in the loop with local newspapers and radio stations and staying active on social media platforms. It's all about making sure everyone's voice is heard and everyone's informed. For our business owners, we'll host events that bring the businesses' community together and work closely with local businesses associations to strengthen our economic work. It's about building a supportive environment where businesses can thrive. For attracting potential residents, we're highlighting the benefits of mixed-use housing and teaming up with local realtors to show potential residents what makes our community special. It's about showcasing the perfect blend of living, working, and playing all in one place. To welcoming tourists and visitors, for our visitors, we're creating comprehensive visitor guides, maps, and highlighting key points of interest. We'll launch vibrant marketing campaigns across digital channels to ensure tourists know all the must-see spots and experiences. It's all about making their stay unforgettable. For engaging investors, we're presenting exciting and For engaging investors, we're presenting exciting investment opportunities that will showcase the potential growth and benefits of putting down roots in our community.
To effectively advertise El Segundo and attract a diverse audience, we will employ a multi-faced approach, leveraging various advertising forms. Traditional advertising methods like posters, billboards, and TV ads will be strategically placed in high-visibility areas. Newspaper ads and major publications will target potential business owners and investors, highlighting the town's favorable business environment and community initiatives.
For a more targeted and engaging approach, we will utilize digital advertising to reach a specific demographic and interest. Online ads, particularly on social media platforms, will be tailored to attract potential residents.
With upcoming famed international events coming to Los Angeles, El Segundo should take that to their advantage and attract tourism and revenue for the city.
The World Cup is going to Los Angeles in the summer of twenty-twenty-six. The games will be held at SoFi Stadium, June twelfth to July tenth. There are eight total games being held at SoFi Stadium and it can hold up to seventy thousand viewers. Los Angeles is expected to bring a lot of tourists, especially because we are hosting the first game of the World Cup. The city's hosting should be expecting between ninety to four hundred and eighty million dollars, which is mostly from the large amounts of tourists.
Our idea is to hold a fair in El Segundo on July eleventh, which is the day before the first World Cup game. According to our survey, forty point six percent of people would enjoy a World Cup event in El Segundo. We wanna hold booths all down Main Street and Grand Avenue, similar to the setup of the Hometown Fair. We wanna attract both children and adults because research shows that kids do attend the World Cup, as it is tradition for little kids to walk onto the field with the players. We can attract children with fun soccer-themed booths, arts and crafts, a petting zoo, and more. For the adults, we can do a beer garden, similar to the art walk. Other booths around could include clubs from El Segundo High School, kewanis, jewelry, clothes, et cetera. We will also have food booths set up all around with many different options for the guests to enjoy. To help with the funding, we could look for sponsors. Besides having the booths, we wanna decorate the street lines similar to the Christmas decoration decorations, except for lights. We would hang up flags of the countries participating in the World Cup.
We still want to attract people to El Segundo the day of the games, so we will have bars and restaurants host watch parties. As sixty-eight percent of people say that they watch the World Cup when it is on TV, we have a lot of places that should do this, including Standard Tavern, Richmond Bar and Grill, Slicing Pipe, and Sauced. Since Sauced is located in El Segundo Plaza, near the point where we could try and get people over there, Nike and Dick's Sporting Goods will have sports memorabilia where people can spend money.
Our second idea is to hold a raffle. We plan to have numerous prizes available and even a chance to win two tickets to the World Cup. There will be six total tickets available for sale. Two on June twelfth, two on June twenty-first, and two on July tenth. Entry fee to the raffle varies from five to twenty dollars. For example, if you paid five dollars, you'd be entered twice. If you paid ten dollars, you would be entered four times, and so on and so forth. Another way for people to enter the raffle is through our passport idea. Each of the booths will be themed off one of the countries participating in the World Cup. If the guests buy something and visit that booth, they'll be able to get a stamp on their passport. The passport is something that the guests will get when they first arrive. The goal is for them to go to all the booths and complete their passport. If their passport gets completed, then they will get an automatic ten entries into the raffle for the tickets. This is a fun way for tourists to interact with our town and what we have to offer. Other prizes in our raffle include jersey, replica trophy, a FIFA soccer ball, and other little trinkets. The raffle will begin on June eleventh and the winner would be announced later that night. This invites people to stay longer in El Segundo and enjoy our stores on Main Street and all of the booths. To raise money, we can ask for donors like the Chargers, Kings, LAFC, and/or Lakers, since most of them are located in El Segundo.
The Olympics provide the largest platform for global sports entertainment, sports media, and international tourism for their events. This is the golden ticket for our city to capitalize on tourists ready to spend their money and reap in the revenue for the city of El Segundo, local restaurants and businesses. Every Fourth of July, El Segundo hosts the fair, which brings in out-of-town visitors, providing entertainment that even longtime residents don't wanna pass up on. By using a similar outline, hosting an Olympic festival, El Segundo can take advantage of Rec Park, bringing in attention to the heart of our city. This will include sports tournaments, soccer matches, flag football, and volleyball games, providing interactive entertainment and a little competition to bring everyone together. Additionally, tennis and pickleball enthusiasts can partake in friendly matches while children can enjoy designated gymnastics areas. When looking at previous Olympic Games, it's evident that they not only just bring in hundreds of thousands of international tourists, but they also drastically increase the economic growth of the hosting city. For example, when we look at the two thousand sixteen Rio Games, it brought in over half a million visitors and six point two billion dollars in revenue. The Statistic Research Department even shows that two years later at the Pyeongchang Winter Olympics in two thousand eighteen, one point fifty-seven million tourists visited South Korea to enjoy the regional festivals. Each year, the total revenue has drastically increased from the previous, which means that we can expect with the two thousand twenty-eight Los Angeles Olympic Games to bring in an all-time high. Previous Olympic Games not only just brought in lots of money and tourists at the time, but they also generated economic benefits long after the games. In order to use this to El Segundo's advantage, we will create attractive events related to the Olympic Games.
To do this, the city of El Segundo should host a Rec Park Festival the week of the Olympics. During the events, there will be live performances at Stevenson Field, as well as food and beverages from local restaurants. We could reach out to local businesses to set up booths such as the El Segundo Brewery or Slicing Pipe. Options are going to be available for everyone. For those that might not have tickets to Olympics, a watch party on Brett Field will also be hosted, so everyone can be immersed in the full Olympic experience. This can work interchangeably with the Super Bowl as well. Large screens will be set up to broadcast the Olympic events, ensuring everyone stays connected to the action and spirit of the Olympics. This watch party will be similar to the watch party that was for the El Segundo Little League World Series. This is a prototype of a banner that would be advertised for the festival. Overall, these events we are planning show approval from El Segundo residents. Looking at our results from the poll, thirty-four point nine percent of all participants say they would be very likely to attend a World Cup, Olympics, or Super Bowl watch party in El Segundo. Most of the participants had neutral to positive thoughts about bringing international tourists to El Segundo for the Olympics and World Cup. With thirty-two point one percent being neutral and fifty point seven percent of participants having positive thoughts towards this. After hearing directly from El Segundo's residents that they would want to go to these events, we can continue to plan them while keeping in mind that many people approve of and are excited for the events. Since the community members also approve of tours being brought in, we can plan on advertising the events to many people.
Low emission travel offers an array of benefits beyond just environmental friendliness. The option of e-bikes, electric scooters, and golf carts can make a significant positive impact. These modes of transportation promote healthier lifestyles. In small cities like El Segundo, e-bikes or electric scooters encourage residents and visitors to engage in physical activity while commuting or exploring the area. E-bikes and scooters allow people to interact more easily with their surroundings and each other, enhancing the social life of small towns.
We want to efficiently incorporate electric bikes and scooters into El Segundo. Our plan of action is to have five bike stations spread out throughout town. We plan on having one station on Main Street in the downtown area, one on Main and Imperial, one at the Point, one at Grand Beach, and finally, one at the Metro Rail Station. We specifically chose these five locations for our bike stations because they're some of El Segundo's most popular spots and most accessible. These spots often have lots of tourists and out-of-towners.
At each station, we plan on having ten electric bikes, three traditional bikes, and three electric scooters. And of course, if all goes well, additional bikes and scooters can be added to each station.
To make this most cost-effective for both the city and the user, we plan to make these bikes and scooters solar-powered. In order to maintain organization, we plan to install trackers in all the equipment and hire employees to collect any bikes or scooters that were left on the street and return them back to the stations. Users will also be charged five extra dollars if transportation is not returned. Bikes and scooters will shut off at ten PM as it's El Segundo's curfew and they will turn back on at six in the morning. For further safety, when it gets dark, the wheels of the bike will light up and there will be a flashlight slash headlight. And for scooters, the bottom of the scooter will light up. In order to operate an electric bike or scooter, the user must be eighteen plus or have a driver's license. This will help to minimize any possible accidents and keep the source of travel as safe as possible. Finally, we will have an El Segundo travel app. This app will include all sorts of information. On our app, there will be an El Segundo map that shows the location of all the bikes and scooters and what's available. There will also be a guide for all of El Segundo's main attractions, like restaurants, parks, Top Golf, local shops, and more.
Our second idea is to implement a slow-moving vehicle lane in the right lane of busier streets. We agreed upon lanes on Main Street and Grand as this would be the most effective. These lanes are for e-bikes, normal bikes, golf carts, scooters, e-scooters, and more. We would like to paint these lanes green or blue to correlate with the local travel network signs that were recently put up around town. By implementing specific lanes for these vehicles, our goal is to improve the safety of travel for these people and assist in traffic flow. Signs will be posted along the streets with these lanes to remind vehicle operators of these rules. It is advised that normal vehicles stay out of these lanes, but it is not prohibited.
Lastly, we plan to incorporate a shuttle system that strictly travels around El Segundo. The shuttle will follow a specific route and essentially go in circles all day, picking up and dropping people off. It will make stops at various locations, starting at Grand Park Plaza, making its way to El Segundo Plaza, then Grand Beach, Main Imperial Plaza, In-N-Out, Top Golf, Plaza El Segundo, and lastly, the Point. It will then circle back around and repeat the same route. Our goal by adding a shuttle system is to allow for local travelers and tourists to be able to visit all of El Segundo's best attractions.
According to our survey, sixty-five percent of takers agree that electric bikes and scooters are an effective source of travel that deserve their own infrastructure. And roughly sixty-seven percent agreed that a local shuttle system would be beneficial for El Segundo.
Some of the main goals that the downtown plan seeks to accomplish was increasing opportunity for public gathering and having more outside seating. For the Civic Center District, we decided to redesign and repurpose the space out in front of the police department. We wanna create another space for entertainment. These are some of the designs that we came out with. We wanna add a grassy area with it being closed by trees on the side and string-hanging lights across. We would also like to add a small stage for local bands to host mini-town concerts or other live performances, such as movie nights or more sporting events. Similar to Manhattan Beach Polywalk Park Amphitheater, we would add seating around the trees and the grassy area would allow for families to lay out on blankets and just enjoy the space. With the new planned parking lot around the corner and the Civic District being the center of Main Street, it would attract many people who are just passing by. The Civic Center is surrounded by local businesses and adding seating to this open area would allow people to support local businesses and order takeout and take it across the street to enjoy a safe and shady outdoor area.
One area we focused on was the beautification of the downtown El Segundo area. With this concept in mind, we came up with several ideas to beautify the space. These ideas include adding more directional signing and the addition of rewilding. The incorporation of new signage throughout will create accessibility and cohesion to the area. As well as this, adding more rewilding will promote an environmentally friendly atmosphere, with its focus being restoring biodiversity and the natural addition of greenery. This will also make for a more appealing and attractive downtown area. We also came up with the idea of adding more lighting, specifically in the Civic Center District. This includes adding lighting around the trees and seating to encourage beautification in the area. A study from the National Library of Medicine actually shows that the inclusion of such greenery greatly reduces stress levels and depressive statuses. With this, we would like to create flower beds and implement non-invasive species to brighten El Segundo, as well as provide natural shading. We are also looking to implement garden-like areas as well throughout El Segundo. We are looking at putting these around the edges of the Civic Center District, as well as throughout the Civic Center District and the downtown area.
Another area we closely focused on was the Rite Aid on Grand. Closing or renovating the Rite Aid in El Segundo is a forward-thinking move that will free a valuable space for possible multipurpose housing units, addressing the community's growing need for affordable living options and creating a more vibrant, mixed-use neighborhood for more flourishing businesses. The inclusion of such housing units would be beneficial to El Segundo, creating a stronger community and providing easier access to goods. An example of what something like that would look like is in the following photo shown. As you can see, not only is the building modernized and renovated, there are also multiple housing units above the storefront.
This idea was brought to our attention through the recent bankruptcy of Rite Aid as a company. Because of this, we discussed possible uses for the Rite Aid lot, with one point of interest being the implementation of mixed-use housing. Our research has led us to conclude that mixed-use housing would benefit the community through an increased amount of available and affordable housing, a positive environmental impact, and increased economic development.
We can advertise the downtown district by launching targeted social media campaigns across platforms like Facebook, Instagram, and Twitter. Regularly send out newsletters to residents, businesses, and stakeholders to keep them informed about the progress of the renovations.
Thank you so much for watching our Civic State project. We hope you enjoyed our ideas and we hope we can help to make El Segundo become a better place.
Um, period four, committee leaders, please make your way forward. Do you wanna start? Alrighty. Are we ready? Carter, we're gonna start with you.
Um, so, um, I was wondering how you would actually expect to, uh, like attract specifically the sports teams to actually come in? Um, considering that, like, most teams during the Olympics, like the, you said, the Los Angeles Kings. Uh, the Olympics are actually in summer and that's the offseason in hockey. A lot of players go to, uh, for example, to Canada, cause that's where a lot of hockey players are from. I was wondering, uh, how exactly you expect it to incentivize them to come all the way back to California to, uh, attend your event?
Um, we actually don't want like the sports teams to come to El Segundo. We just want them to help raise money for us to be able to get the tickets to give to people for the World Cup. We don't need like the players or anyone here. We would just like their donations and sponsorships.
James?
Uh, I liked your idea to use Rite Aid, um, as like mixed-use housing, but how do you actually plan on getting them to leave?
Um, so because of their bankruptcy, they've been closing down stores nationwide. I think they're about a hundred and fifty close stores now. So with this, we would like to contact them and possibly negotiate, um, buying the slot and using it to repurpose it as it is a big space and the mixed-use housing would provide a lot of utility for residents close by and possibly create more foot traffic in that area as well.
Chad?
Um, I just had, um, a concern. How are we supposed to ensure, um, e-bike safety if one of the points is across PCH, which is gonna be at the point? I mean, if you're gonna be able to rent the bikes, like, do we really trust people to go back and forth across PCH and what's stopping them from going even further into Manhattan Beach areas like that?
Um, so what we had on our bikes is that they would probably have like a sensor that would limit them only into the city of El Segundo. And in the sense of, uh, ensuring safety, I mean, that's why we made it to have to, for the people that are gonna be using our bikes to be eighteen or have a driver's license, just to ensure that, I mean, they're gonna be responsible and safe enough. And also what we said is that we're gonna have workers that are gonna be able to pick up the bikes, almost like Bird and Lime, how they have people that pick them up and put them back in the stations for them to be charged. So, yeah.
Luke?
Uh, I liked your idea of the raffle, but with any raffle, there's always a chance of fraud. And do you have any systems in place to make sure that you're not like swindled out of tickets?
Um, I mean, we were just doing like stamps for like each booth, so like how like the other period was saying, like, we're gonna have custom stamps and stuff. So there's like, there's a way where we make sure that there's no fraud or anything with the raffle.
I really liked how you guys said to use like solar power to power all the different bikes and all that stuff. I was wondering, cause you said that you had to be either have a driver's license, so sixteen or eighteen to use them. Did you have any plan, totally okay if not, to deal with like the underage, I guess, biker riders that are all around, kinda cause a ruckus?
I guess we didn't really consider that a lot, but I guess it would probably be a fine of some sort and I'm assuming if they kept doing it, it'd probably lead into bigger consequences.
Um, my question is, I really liked like the app and everything for the slow-moving vehicles, but is there a reason why the shuttle didn't go into like real downtown El Segundo? It kinda looked like it just went down PCH, Imperial, El Segundo Boulevard. There were, it didn't really go into El Segundo. Was there a reason behind that?
Uh, not really, but it did go down, uh, Grand and Main and a few places like that, so it is still going into El Segundo. But those are just like the main attractions, kinda like Top Golf and all those places on, um, is that PCH?
Thank you. Adam? Nope, Matt, got anything?
Um, I was gonna say, would you can, um, say that maybe the, the bike lanes that were on either side, would those still allow for traffic to move both directions on Main and Grand? And allow for the younger, um, generation to be safe while riding their bikes in El Segundo?
Yeah, so it's still gonna be able to go both ways for tra- Yeah, so it's still gonna be able to go both ways for traffic and, um, for the bike lanes, it's still gonna be able to, everyone's still gonna be able to use it. It's just they're gonna be painted a different color, just so it's highlighted that it, for slow-speed vehicles and low-emission travel that, if, they can still use it, but it's just, like, to the drivers, um, I guess, so that they're aware that it's still used for, uh, slow-speed vehicles to go in twenty-five miles per hour, just to kind of ensure the safety of that still.
Um, I know in your video you talked about how you would protect the bikes and the scooters from being stolen, right, by having a chip there? But what about the bikes that are not currently in use, that are just being parked there stationary? How do you protect them from people's vandalism and just trying to break them?
Well, I guess that's a good point, but, um, I guess we're, I mean, they're gonna be having sensors on them, so they're not gonna really be able to get moved out. And if you're gonna be, I guess, vandalizing them, I guess we'll have cameras on that and we'll probably be able to find you and if you, if you do something, they'll probably find you.
Ian got anything?
So I really like the idea of, like, the one-day fair before, or like, before the first game. But how would you make sure that people keep on coming back to El Segundo, not just for the, for the one day?
Um, we plan to have watch parties on the other days for people to come, to continue to come back.
Tim?
Yeah, I liked your guys' ideas on festivals. I was wondering if you had any other ideas to kind of branch out from kind of that local scope? Like, if you had anything bigger for those events?
Um, we were planning on advertising these events on, like, social media and through banners, like, not just in El Segundo, um, so that everybody, like, international tourists can see on social media, like, the events. If they're coming in town or anybody near the airport can see the banners to, um, come for the events as well.
Awesome. Great job, period four. I really liked all the advertising. Wow. That was lots of scary faces. Alright, yeah, it's on. Alright, so we're just gonna have a little discussion up here, so if anybody wants to share their thoughts from up here, anyone? On any of the videos? Okay, would anyone like to move approval of one of the videos? Okay. Anybody want to make a motion to approve the videos, like? One of the projects? And it cannot be your own. Okay, let's clarify. So I'm just asking for discussion if we want to discuss on the topic. If we do not want to discuss, I'm gonna ask for a motion and then you'll motion to approve the video and then we'll take a second and then we'll vote. So is there any videos that we would like to discuss right now? Patrick?
So, um, Adam and I, we thought that a lot of the videos are very good. We liked the ideas, like, example, bringing in athletes from the Olympics, um, creating a full-on bike lane that is protected from cars. Um, and we ju, we think that period four also had some very good ideas with, um, the Rite Aid lot being that it is a huge swath of land in downtown El Segundo with prime real estate.
Actually, you're not allowed to talk about your own period.
We're not motioning, we're just discuss, we're just discussing.
No discussion upon your own class. Any other discussion out there?
I really like period two's, uh, sport packages, their tickets, their food discount, all that stuff, and also their crea, creation of merch. I thought that was really innovative.
Any other discussion out there? Mac?
I wanted to say, I feel like, um, a lot of this time during our discussion, we've been focused a lot on the e-bike situation. And I like that a lot of the periods, the specifically, uh, a couple who expanded more on the, um, sports-related and like tourists and things like that that are coming to El Segundo, I like that, um, a lot of the periods expanded more on those. And as well as the e-bike situation and the downtown plan, so congra, good for everybody who did.
Uh, I just wanted to say I really liked, uh, period four's, uh, inclusion of the Rite Aid. Um, I think that was, uh, very interesting that they researched and determined that Rite Aid was going out of business and that they could convert that area. And, uh, I feel like w- with, uh, further development, maybe they could change it into something else that doesn't have to be Rite Aid. Um, so I think it could be, uh, a very good prospect in the future and I want to commend them on that. I guess, applaud.
Awesome. Any other discussion out there?
Yeah.
Tim, do you have anything?
Yeah, I had, I had something on, uh, Rite Aid. I thought that it was a little bit premature since it's still in business and just because the other stores are closing doesn't necessarily mean we need to try to get this one to close. So I didn't like the idea of reaching out to them to see if we could buy the lot before it's actually gone out of business.
Good point, Tim. I agree.
Yeah, I want to elaborate a bit on Tim's idea, specifically because there is another big store that's about to close in El Segundo, being ninety-nine cent store. So why not just use that area, which is already confirmed to be going extinct, and instead try to negotiate with Rite Aid and pay even more money? But just doesn't seem to make a lot of sense.
Luke?
Uh, I really liked period two's idea about the smell things. I feel like that could be really, like, good and utilized very well. No, it's not my, it's not my period. Nah, I really liked that idea. It was good.
Alright. Does anybody have a motion to approve any of these videos? Ava?
I motioned to approve period one's video.
Second? Does anybody want to second that?
I second.
Okay, she is motioning to approve period two's video. Does someone, oh, period one's video, does anyone? Tim seconds. Uh, motion approved. Oh, no, we're voting, sorry. Any further discussion? Otherwise, I am calling for the vote. Yes, but, okay, let me clarify. This is, this is a motion to approve period one's video. And project, okay, for the video, like, we're grading it right now. We're voting it. So Ava motioned it, Tim seconded it, we're about to take a vote. You can vote yes or no. This is your final vote. Seven yes votes means win. If, no, not if somebody doesn't second it. Yes.
Are we approving for the winner? Are we, are we voting for one winner?
There is a motion on the floor. Would anybody like to? Yes. These people right here are voting. There's twelve. Seven. Question?
Is this voting for the winner?
Yes, we are voting for the winner. So if you want period one, you, that is your final vote, then you would vote right now. If you do not, then you would not vote right now. Does this make sense? Yes. Yes, because there, you can only vote once. You can only vote once, so there would be no other way to take over.
Hey, I was doing great. Um, a little procedural suggestion. We have a first and a second on the floor, okay? We gotta take a vote. If they get seven votes, seven yes votes, this project wins. That is Robert Rules of Order. City Attorney, is that correct? Thank you. So if it does not get seven yes votes, then we go to another motion, which would be, I would like to ma, move approval of project, whatever, X. And then if that gets a second, then we go to a vote. Any questions on the procedure? Yes?
Yeah, so I assume that we can all vote for our own periods, right?
You are not allowed to vote for your own class.
Yeah, but then, doesn't that make the majority five instead of seven? Because the maximum amount of votes, one group.
I, I, I think what we should do here is make a motion to vote on each one. And then the, I think one or two of them is going to get a tie or more, more votes. And then we make a motion to vote for those and we narrow it down each round. I think we should narrow it down each round, eliminate one each round.
Okay, just deviation from what would normally happen, we did not normally do this. So we're gonna, that means just to get the rules straight, so we're clear here. They cannot vote on their own project, right?
They cannot.
Okay, so, um,
I think we should vote on each one and then eliminate one on each round.
Okay, so don't vote on your own is the thing here, right?
Okay, so you get one vote per round and you cannot vote on your own project?
Who, who's the arbiter of whether or not somebody's in a project? Are we just relying on, okay, great.
Alright, here we go. So please say aye and raise your hand if you vote period one. Hands down. Okay, if you vote period two, please raise your hand and say aye. If you vote period three, please say aye and raise your hand. If you vote period four, please raise your hand and say aye. Aye.
Who did not vote? Anyone not vote?
Well, that changed.
Everybody has to vote on something.
They both voted for three, so now we have, it's still one and two are tied with four votes. So, um, I think,
Well, we're eliminate one and then do all three again. I think we should eliminate whoever came last.
So now we are eliminating period four. We are going to period one, two, and three for a revote.
The people who didn't get one now can vote and they might change.
We are voting all three again. So your votes is between period one, period two, and period three. Please raise your hand and say aye if you vote for period one. Please raise your hand and say aye if you vote for period two. Please raise your hand and say aye if you vote for period three. Alright. Period two is our winner.
Alright, I think that's it. Mr. Mayor, you want to say anything?
Yes.
First of all, it's giving up for Madam Mayor with the facilitation skill. Really well done. Sorry if I complicated matters, but the way we started was really how we would do things. We would not do, like, a vote like that, but I think Craig was right. So sorry if we deviated from your expectation there. Couple of quick notes, and I, I think some of these were touched on, but these are really good ideas. I know staff, I see Elias, Director of Public Works and others nodding their heads, Michael Allen, Director of, um, Community Development. We have some of my favorites for the fire pit at City Hall. I don't think that would take a ton of effort. I'm sure the city attorney's over there thinking about liability, but I love that idea. Love the viewing party also from presentation one. Presentation two, love the Olympic fan packages with the dining coupons. I think that's really interesting. I love the transportation to and from SoFi on the beach. Presentation three. They did their homework on the recent downtown development plan. That was really interesting to see that you understood what we were already planning there. I appreciate that. A lot of work and effort went into that. And I like the idea of a multi-use development at Trader Joe's. You know, for us, if we convert commercial to residential, sorry, I said Trader Joe's. I meant, I meant at the ninety-nine cent store. There's no Trader Joe's coming in, but if there was, it would be interesting to have a multi-use development there with housing up top. I like that idea. Presentation four, um, I loved the pre-World Cup fair festival idea and the Rite Aid lot. I have no idea what's happened with the Rite Aid. Um, I don't, we haven't heard anything at this city that we hear they're healthy, even if they've closed some stores. I think they've closed some stores because of retail theft, frankly, in, in California. Um, but the idea of, uh, housing mixed-use development there, I think, could be really interesting as well. I don't know how that plays within our housing overlay, but that's right there, isn't it? Pretty much, yeah. So really interesting ideas. I want to thank everybody, um, you guys, you, you, great. I mean, I, I said this last couple times, the future of El Segundo is incredibly bright, given your, all your intelligence and your passion for the city. We appreciate it. I'm gonna turn it over to my colleagues to say a few words.
So I think you realize now it's not so easy to do it up here, is it? Every time I think you get a great idea, there's eight people who think that's terrible. Welcome to our world. Um, I did, I think it's some great ideas. Uh, it's tough because obviously the, y'all had similar types of things. A lot of time it has to do with the messaging, but there was a few things that did stick out. Um, actually, I thought the mini-Olympics idea was a great idea. Uh, that, that was kind of a cool thing. Um, the tailgating and things like that, I think is a good idea. I know, again, our, a city attorney over here is saying that's a really bad idea, but the three big events that we have coming to town over the next few years are, are, are vital. Having that kind of exposure to the town, the ability to generate revenue i- i- is important. And how we're gonna be able to take advantage of that is, is going to be, uh, vital. So, um, I, I really appreciated all that, the advertising ideas and the airports and things like that. One of the things that's, that's difficult though is, you know, you didn't really get covered is who's gonna pay for all this? Um, and that is part of it. There's a financial component to everything, um, but again, it's, you know, for, for the, uh, the scope of work you had to do uh, and the amount of time you had to do it is very impressive. So again, thank you very much for putting all your time in and, uh, great work. uh, and the amount of time you had to do it is very impressive. So, again, thank you very much for putting all your time in, and, uh, great work.
So, I just wanna thank you all for putting the time and effort into this. It was great. It's great to hear the young voices of our town, um, create ideas and, you know, and look at the town in its future. And I'm really excited, you know, to encourage you to keep engaged in local government. Um, your voice does matter, and it's important that we continue to, um, foster activity, because when we go silent, as one change doesn't happen. So, it's important that you keep involved, and as you move into your next phase of your life, or you're all seniors going off to college, or wherever you're going, um, stay engaged, and I hope in the, in the near future, you know, that you'll be sitting, one of you will be sitting up here at this dais. So, th- thank you very much, and I just thank you for all the ideas and creativity.
Uh, very impressed with all the time you guys put into it. A couple of things I really liked. We're gonna have a large captive audience at these hotels, so the bingo card, the discount card, something to get people downtown is a great idea and something we could easily implement. I like the idea of that temporary statue saying Olympics or World Cup. Create that Instagrammable moment right here in downtown. Bring people downtown, give them a reason to stay. I was impressed with your survey responses. Three hundred and forty-five people responded to some of your surveys. That's on par with what the city puts out, okay? I wanna caution you about surveys and, and polls, though. Use it as it's intended to be. It is a tool for you to consider. The most important thing you bring to this project or any project you will have are your own personal experiences, okay? Whatever job you get, whatever position you have, you're in that position because of who you are and what you bring to the table. So, use a survey for information, but don't be beholden to it. Understand that you've got some value of yourself, of your own ideas. You've all lived in this town. You have an idea of what the town should be like, what it should look like, apparently what it should smell like, all important parts. The one thing I want you to take away from this entire process is I hope it demystifies what your local government does and who your local government is. There is no qualification to be up here, other than the fact that we want what's best for this city. We wanna create a good, safe environment for all you guys. And hopefully, one day, you'll be able to turn around and give it back in this community, if you're lucky enough to be here, or any community you find that you're able to call home. So, very proud of what you guys have done. Congratulations on finishing your senior year, and best of luck to you guys.
We are now adjourned.